...citizen advisory committee, uh, city of Lowell, uh, for our regular meeting on Monday, November the 11th, 2019, uh, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, vote please.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Schramman.
Here.
And Commissioner Cadwalder and the leader, Eppson. Commissioner Barker.
Here.
Uh, do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, October 14th?
Do you want to excuse White?
Uh, I haven't heard anything. You want to, it's up to you if you want to make a motion.
Make a motion that we excuse Dave and White.
Support?
I'll support.
And discussion? It's okay with me.
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
They are, um, excused. Sorry about that. Um, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to accept that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
And support?
Support.
And any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda stands approved. Uh, do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, October 14th? Uh, minutes, the pr- uh, motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of the previous meeting, October 14th, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the minutes have accepted then. If there are any public comments, uh, or, um, any items that are not on the agenda that you would like to discuss tonight, if they are on the agenda, you will get a chance, everybody will get a chance to speak on them, so. Anything new? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, old business, zoning ordinance amendments. Andy.
Thank you. At the, so it's been a few days, a few months since we've last, um, worked on the zoning ordinance, if you recall, over the last, probably a year and a half or so, we've been kind of going through chapter by chapter of the zoning ordinance, making adjustments, um, revisions, amendments, and so forth. Um, we're really down to the last few sections here, so I just have a short, one-page memo for you here that kind of outlines what's left, and really, there's three sections left for us, for us to look at. Um, first is nine residential districts, which is chapters 10 through 13, 16, and 16A. Um, so that is, uh, C1, C2, C3, mixed use, uh, industrial, I think, uh, a couple others, light industrial, um, and then we have site plan review and definitions. So I guess I would propose that if you want to continue working through the zoning ordinance, that we tackle them in that quarter. So for the next, uh, meeting, we would prepare provision for those non-residential chapters listed there in the heading, so with 10, 11, 12, 12A, 13, 16, and 16A. Um, I think that most of them probably will not see significant revision, um, but there are a few areas in here, um, where from an administrative standpoint, they are fairly challenging to deal with, there's some provisions there that cause, uh, cause us some confusion and no cause property or some confusion, so we can explain those and clean those up for the next meeting. Um, after that, we'll tackle site plan review, which should be pretty straightforward, uh, the chapter generally, I think, is in pretty good shape as far as your procedures go. Uh, there will be probably a handful of little adjustments here and there that, that we will make. Um, and then definitions is kind of the last one that we agreed to do, just because as we make these changes going through it, it'll be, uh, a little bit simpler just to go through it, the definitions at the end, and the primary focus of that effort will be to make sure that all the land uses in the ordinance are defined and defined correctly, um, if we need to add some, uh, graphics or illustrations to, uh, to kind of describe those terms, so a lot here, or a lot of property, or whatever, a lot of those terms are easier to understand the definition of if you look in a picture instead of reading a paragraph of text, so, uh, we will take care of that. So, um, this is kind of an update as, as to where we are, and so I guess depending on what the consensus of the funding commission is, we will move forward or not, uh, these chapters over the next several months.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, commissioners, uh, again, we've spent, uh, it's been two years, I'm pretty sure that we started this process, you have to update your zoning ordinances, um, every five years. Uh, you don't have to update them necessarily, you don't have to accept them as they are or update them, and we chose to update them. Um, so this has been a, a two-year process, and we've taken them in chunks, and as we, as we go through them, then we pass them on to the city council for acceptance, rejection, turn back, redo, or any of those things that they might want to do. But, uh, so far, we've gone through the vast majority of them, so we are down to this. I would propose, um, that we do as Andy suggested, we take the, um, non-residential district standards, uh, 10 through 13, 16, 16A, and try to do those in December. If we don't finish them in December, obviously, we can go to January and just continue it and go from there. Um, and then, uh, in January, hopefully, we'd be able to do the site plan today and turn Andy loose on, on doing the definitions, because we, as a group, we will probably just accept the definitions more than really go through them a lot. So that would free us, get us free from the zoning ordinance redo, which is, like I said, it's been a two-year process. Um, and we know that we're going to have a number of things coming up in February, March, and things of that nature, on site plan reviews and things of that nature. So it would be good to get those passed and on, onto the city commissions, so. Anybody have any real objection to that?
No, you want to do all three before you bring it back to us, right?
Uh, I think we probably would do the, um, uh, chapters 10 through 13, 16, and 16A as one group, and then probably do the site plan review and definitions as the second group to the council. That way, if we have any cleanup, we can do it at the same time.
So we could possibly see that by January, right?
Well, it's, yeah, it'd be possible. I think it might be pushing it, but hopefully by, no later than February. I think that makes the most sense.
Agreed.
Andy, uh, or Sue, if you'll make sure that it would be on our agenda for that process, for those processes, I guess, as, as we go along.
Sure.
Thank you, Andy. Um, new business, uh, like to, uh, or we have a public hearing, site plan, special land use for 2485 West Main to, uh, 36 Alden Nash, uh, and I think what we'll do is we will go through, um, you know, I'm going to open the public hearing now, and then I won't forget it, and then we'll start with Andy, if he will go through the process. So we're going to be talking about the West Main LLC, special land use and site plan review. An audience, I know there are some out there that are, or have questions and thoughts on it, um, and we will certainly give you an opportunity to address at, at the appropriate time, so, uh, you will have, have your fair chance to, you know, chime in and let us know what your thoughts are, so that we can, uh, come to a good decision for everybody, okay? So what's that? Andy?
Yes. Thank you. So this is an, uh, application, uh, from West Main LLC, and it's, very simple application. Uh, what they're asking for is to store some shipping containers outside on a property, uh, temporarily, it'll be kind of coming on, that we stage there for some period of time and then take it off-site. Um, this is the Michigan Wire property, it's the northeast corner of Alden Nash and Main Street. Um, so outdoor storage is kind of customary on this site, it's kind of, it has historically occurred there quite a bit, you know, I'm kind of on the northern part of that, that property, um, there was outdoor storage that occurred there for years and years. Um, and so in this case, anything that involves outdoor storage or any change like that to the, uh, site plan or the, or the operation that involves some kind of new outdoor storages or triggers, just special land use review, um, and so what they propose here is a fairly small number of shipping containers stored outside of the property in an area shown on the site plan here, that's about 200 by 100 an area, um, in orderly of those two parcels, so this would be the parcel of 236 Alden Nash, um, so the proposal would be to kind of, you know, truck them in and truck them out. Um, the suggested ingress and egress would be off of Alden Nash only, and on, off of Main Street, just because all of this close to the intersection and turning movements, uh, specifically if you're going to be turning left, that close to the light would be challenging on, on Main Street there. So, um, that's kind of an overview of the site plan, and, um, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want me to walk through the report first, or do you want to hear from the applicant?
Uh, if the applicant is here, we'd, uh, would invite them to come forward and, uh, just go through the, uh... Ian, if you would, just give us your name and address and that sort of thing.
Dean Lotte.
Dean?
I live in Cascade, but, uh, represent this property, 2485, 2487 West Main, 236 Alden Nash.
Right, right. Would you just, in your own words, just kind of tell us what you want to do?
Uh, we'd just like to, uh, have approval to have, uh, storage container, or shipping containers, um, on the site, uh, we anticipate 12 to 15 tops, um, no, uh, they won't have anything in them, they'll be empty, it's more of a, uh, staging and transfer, uh, uh, operation that, uh, a, a potential client of ours has in mind.
So there would be nothing in the containers?
Correct.
At all?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and then they would come in off of Main Street?
Principally off Alden Nash.
Coming in off, in, in, off?
Logistically, the, the flow is off of Alden Nash.
Okay. Would they be cycling, I mean, 12 to 15, you said, uh, cycling through, or?
Yeah, it would be, we, we didn't, we would anticipate 12 to 15 total on the, on the ground at any one point in time. Um, what they do is they rent, lease these things to folks, uh, trying to expand their business up here into the Grand Rapids area and, uh, north up here, um, so yeah, they would cycle in and out, I, I can't guess at the, the frequency, um, I, if I had to guess, it would be several months.
Okay, not daily?
Correct.
Do you know what their hours of operations are going to be?
Uh, daylight hours.
And what size are the containers?
20 foot and 40 foot?
Okay.
20 foot long, 40 foot long, um, 7 foot wide, 8 foot high.
Then, uh, commissioners, any other questions to Dean? Okay, let's, uh, thank you, Dean, and we may call you back.
Sure.
Okay. Um, if we could, why don't we walk through this, and then we'll open it up to the public? I think that, the, the format will be, let's have you go through it, and then we'll read it up to the public, and then we'll go through.
So there are two sets of standards here that we need to walk through, this is the site plan review and the special land use, those two are typically done concurrently, and that's the way that we usually do it here. Um, one requires the, well, the special land use requires the site. Um, so we'll walk through the site plan review standards first, um, because there's not really anything changing to the site other than this old storage area, uh, on the north side of the property, behind principally the building, um, a lot of these standards aren't going to be, um, as, you know, they don't apply as much as they would in other cases, where you have a new building or something like that, but in the interest of completeness, um, we will walk through them one at a time. So, Mr. Chairman, you want me to stop after each one, just to make sure there's a consensus of approval?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so the first standard, uh, it, uh, says that the usage proposed at first see effectively for health, safety, or welfare, uses and structures located on the site shall be planned, take into account topography, size of the property, uh, uses on adjoining property, in relationship with size of buildings in the site, and that the site shall be developed so as not to impede the normally orderly development or improvement of surrounding property where use permitted in this ordinance. Um, you know, our, our take here, we list out in our report what's surrounding it, so properties to the south and east are also the zone industrial, uh, there's a rental bank rate to the south as well, um, to the west is 1204, which is commercial use, obviously, and a little township, and then to the north, there are some fairly low density, single family, uh, uh, single family homes there, um, however, there's, you know, probably 50 to 100 feet of trees between, um, the, the northern boundary of the subject parcel and where the, um, containers would be stored. So our, our take on this was that this, this standard was, was, is met, um, this is a property that's historically been used for fairly similar purposes to what's being proposed here, um, so, you know, from that perspective, obviously, subject to any concerns brought up from the public later on in this meeting, um, our, our opinion was that subject to those concerns, that the standard would likely be satisfied.
Um, commissioners, any questions? I think I'd like to open it up to the public at this point, um, if there are any concerns about the neighborhood, uh, from the neighborhood. Please feel free to come on out and just give us your name and address, please.
Sure. I'm Paula Belazski, I own the property at 321 Alden Nash, uh, which is, actually is adjacent to this property. Um, I guess my few questions that I have, um, just wondering again if this gets approved for these containers, um, wants to say that later on down the road, you don't have people's RVs being parked in there, and everything else, it all becomes something like a junkyard. Um, you know, so that was kind of, I was kind of curious if that was something that would be a line in this ordinance, or if it's strictly just a container usage.
Can, can you answer that?
Um, the approval would be structured such that it would only be for the containers, and our suggestion here would be to, if it were approved, is the planning permission limited, limited number of containers on the site, and that the storage of those be limited to only the locations shown on the site.
I guess that, you know, I, I've seen the property for years, my mother lived there for numerous years, and I was raised there, so I do know, you know, when the wire company came in, it was very noisy and stuff, and, uh, they assisted in putting up a large fence to help with the noise and things like that, so I have had the cooperation of the wire company in years past with us, and then no way of trying to, um, basically, you know, deter them from getting this, but at the same time, I do have the property up for sale right now, and so I have to think, you know, down the road, you know, as this property's trying to sell, you know, how fast, I guess, is this going to happen? Do you know what date, if it's approved, when you'd be able to bring the shipping containers in, when they would actually be on-site?
Um, so after, so if, if he is approved this evening, there's a few days where the site plan is circulated around, throughout the city, uh, to the departments, um, and then after that, it would be effective pretty much right away, so, you know, within a few weeks, you would probably be able to start bringing them in, assuming, it sounds like, Dean, this was a prospective client, so if, you know, he, if that client uses the property for that purpose, which is, doesn't sound like 100% yet, but assuming that, assuming that's the case, it would be, um, fairly quickly, I would guess, that would make a start bringing them on.
Well, one other question I would have then of Dean, if, if this does happen in, you know, say a couple of weeks, would the company that you're working with bring in the 12, 15 containers at one time, and then, and then all of a sudden, it starts, you know, one goes out, or two goes out, and you replace?
I, I don't, uh, we haven't had that level of discussion, but, but logistically, it's unlikely there's going to be a train. Um, they'll move in one or two or three, uh, I, I would not expect a lot of traffic. Uh, historically, when we operated Michigan Wire, we had, uh, 50 to 70 trucks per day in and out of there.
Right.
Uh, so this is really, uh, a, a minimal impact in comparison to what was historically.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I think that basically answered my question, and that's what I was kind of concerned with, you know, whether it was going to be the same traffic, the same noise, you know, hours of the day and night, that type of thing, and, and, when you say, uh, just re, business hours and, yes, less traffic, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
But then, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioners, anybody else?
I just, kind of here, photos, looks like there's a lot of interim storage on the lot anyway, but, um, uh, my scale bars cut off on this thing, but it said they're 30 feet by...
20 feet or 40 feet.
20 or 40 feet.
It's like, that being, it's not like I said it was one day, just bring to the table.
Okay, hold on, hold on. You want to finish your comment?
Uh, just, it seems like the scale of, I'm, just by trying to eyeball here, I'm curious about the scale of the shipping containers relative to the other structures shown in interim storage on the lot already, would help you assess if this is going to be a big change in operational scope, or if it's going to be even negativ, and, you know?
Well, you got one there, you got one there, you got one there.
Doesn't look like it would be that impactful.
Yeah.
I think it's very negligible, you know, seems like it. Yeah, so that's, so that, you know? Not talking to 75 trucks a day, or even 15 a day, you're not talking about, you're talking about one, two, you're not even going to know that that, that truck's coming through there. Yeah, as long as they're not, like, stacked pretty high, they're, you know, they...
No, one, one of the, uh, uh, things we require of the, uh, prospect is that there is no stacking.
Yeah.
They would only be one high, um, and they will, uh, the way they're moved is on a roll-off trailer, so, uh, they get, uh, slid off and winched on to a roll-off trailer, uh, so the, the tallest would be eight foot, um, maybe 12 when it's on the trailer. And we, we have tractor trailers in and out of there for, uh, the adjacent business, for D and D trucking, and this would be even a lighter impact than, than they have.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, like, um, how do you determine, sorry, I'm being, I'm Paula's daughter, um, how do you determine the distance, um, that you need to have to make it, say, residential versus, um, you know, commercial, or, like you said, it's the way, you know, there's a way of, besides junk, that they put on there, so it's not, like, it's a big deal? What, where do those, how many feet, or how, what is the, you know?
Offset?
Yeah.
Andy's getting, Andy's getting your answer.
I think it's, so I think we require a 50-foot setback, um, from the edge of where the containers would be stored to an adjoining property, so in our case, we would require maybe setback at least 50 feet from that northerly property line.
So that's how you determine whether it's commercial or residential?
Well, commercial or residential is just based on the zoning map.
Okay, what kind of zoning would it be for, um, like, Michigan Wire, that's obviously not commercial, right?
It's industrial, yes.
Industrial, okay. So how many feet, or where do you draw the line, you say, okay, industrial's over here, we're only a couple sits away, and we're residential, how do you defer that line?
Usually, it's the, the boundary between a parcel, between the zoning districts is just, typically, it's, it's on the same line as the lot line, so there are some instances where you have...
So I guess, why is this one residential, why is it an industrial zone?
Uh, because there's a house on it, and we want the house to be...
So if we snatch the house down, would it then be industrial, based on the environment?
You would have to apply for that zoning, but you could ask for it.
Just curious.
Hmm?
Okay.
Okay, you want to go to, uh, commissioners, do you want to vote on one at a time, or how do you want to do this?
Before we move on, Bruce?
Yeah.
Are you planning on marking out their boundaries? Putting stakes or something to where they're inside of their boundary?
I mean, there's property line, I don't know if it's serving...
No, 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 for, for the containers.
Oh. I want, Eric's down there.
I, I really wasn't planning on it. Well, because I'm just thinking, and they can go nearly, really, they can be everywhere, instead of in a consp, you know, the area that we're looking at. Uh, but the way we work the property, um, uh, now that it's winter again, uh, we'll soon be plowing snow, and, and we keep a lane at the north end for movement, um, and for moving the snow, we plow that whole thing, and all the snow we plow to the north, so, uh, I, it wasn't planning on staking it out, I really don't. Well, I'm just saying, because you're asking for that, this piece. More or less, yeah, yeah. So in other words, you want to be able to float it anywhere around on the property? Uh, not really anywhere on it, uh, some give or take to those dimensions.
There's a 50-foot setback, correct? That's what you read?
Yeah, so the ordinance requires that anything, um, that buildings and so forth be set back at least 50 feet from that northerly property line, which, based on this, the sketch here, they would meet that pretty easily, I mean, this, the, the northerly part of this rectangle is drawn on the map, it's probably 150 feet from that northerly property.
We could make that a condition too, so.
Yeah, I'm just saying, because...
Just want to offer that as a condition, I, you know, you can expand, you know, slightly on both sides, right, you know, all of that, and, uh, obviously, they're going to, they're going to have space there, but it, it depends on the movement from how you go at, so.
As long as they're, they're keeping within the ordinance.
Right.
It doesn't really matter.
It's just a condition that we can, you know, we can ask, you know?
I mean, moving forward, I would, I would like to have the storage of these things occur consistent with what's on the site plan.
Right.
Um, that's really our only way to keep track of...
Exactly.
What's going on, you know, to comply with the same.
That's why I was asking about this 110 by 300, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at.
Right.
Not looking at 115, or not looking at 205, we're looking at just that area to be approved.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, that's what I'm asking about.
Right.
You know, we don't need that floating around that property.
Right.
Yeah.
Confined to the area.
Yep.
And we can make that a condition.
Yep.
Um, uh, commissioners, do you want to, uh, vote on each one of these standards, uh, or do you want to go through all F, uh, A through F, and then come back and vote on them?
No, I'd be just easy to vote as we go.
Okay, then, is there any other questions in regard to the, uh, review standard A? All in favor of accepting it as, as okay, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote same time, so it is accepted. Okay?
And B? And B states that safe, convenient, and invested and well-defined pedestrian circulation shall be provided for ingress and egress points and access to the site. Drive streets and other circulation routes shall be designed to promote safe and efficient traffic operations within the site and at ingress and egress points. Um, and again, they're not proposing any new access points to Alden Nash or to Main Street, this is an existing site, um, and I think the most logical point of, of access is Alden Nash anyways, for reasons that I mentioned earlier. Um, there is not really much pedestrian activity that occurs here, um, so we don't have, you know, significant concerns about that, like we would in other areas of the city, so, um, we have added a, a condition of approval, uh, or a suggested condition of, of approval that would limit ingress and egress to Alden Nash only, um, so subject to that being included as a condition, uh, our, our finding would be that, uh, that standard is satisfied.
Commissioners, any questions? General public, any questions on that? Okay, uh, all in favor of accepting B as, uh, as a, a standard, please say aye.
Aye.
And vote same time. B is accepted.
C? I have C, state set the arrangement of public or private vehicular and pedestrian infections to existing or planned streets in the area, shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic from the city of Lowell. Um, there is one point of ingress and egress that's being proposed, there are no, there are no planned streets in this area, there are two existing streets, uh, they're suggesting that one be utilized for ingress and egress, as we talked about, um, the other, the other parts of that, of that standard as far as planned streets and pedestrian infections and stuff does not really apply, and this is not a pedestrian heavy site, so, um, our, our suggestion is that that standard is satisfied.
Commissioners, any discussion? General public, any discussion? Uh, all in favor of accepting, uh, C as, uh, as the review standard, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote same time. C is accepted. Dean?
I have D, states the removal, removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to develop the site in accordance with requirements of the ordinance. Planning permission requires that approved landscaping buffers and/or green belts be continuously maintained to ensure that the proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another and from surrounding public and private property. Um, this is already a disturbed site, so there aren't, uh, natural features there presently that would be disturbed. Um, this is already a disturbed site, so there aren't, uh, natural features there presently that would be disturbed. A site in the flood plain or anything like that, so this damage is, is generally met. Um, we added in our, in our comments here that continuous maintenance of landscape areas can be required as a condition of approval. And what I mean by landscape areas is, you know, we don't want to cut down all the trees on the northern part of the site, obviously, because that provides that bit of protection from, for the neighbors to the north. So we would want that to be maintained, um, and as long as that occurs, then we feel like this standard would also be met.
Uh, fencing too?
Uh, if there's a fence there, then it should stay, yes.
And maintained?
Yes.
Commissioners, any discussion on D? General public? All in favor then of accepting, uh, D as a review standard? Please say aye.
Aye.
And aye, same sign. They are accepted then? Or D is accepted, I should say. Uh, and E?
Satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, codes, and requirements of the city of Lowell will, will be met. Again, um, this is primarily addressed as a condition of approval, which is a condition that we put on everything. Um, we don't, there's nothing in here on the site plan as far as the drawings and, and ingress and egress and all these kinds of things that is not in compliance with the ordinance. So, um, you know, based on that, um, would be subject to the conditions of approval.
Do, do we have to include in here that the containers are empty? In other words, there's no hazardous material being stored on site?
Yes.
So that nature.
Yeah, so I'm thinking as conditions of approval, we would add that the containers be empty and you don't stack all the, things like that.
Commissioners, good idea?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that as a condition of approval. Any other discussion on E? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is accepted then with those conditions?
And item F, the general purposes and superior disertance and comprehensive plans of the city of Lowell shall be maintained. Uh, the master plan outlines this area as functionally industrial, the master plan. Um, feature on this map shows this, shows this as industrial. It's been industrial for a long time, and we don't see any reason to, uh, change course at this point. So therefore, we feel like this standard is also satisfied.
Commissioners, any discussion? All in favor then of accepting F as the, um, review standard? Please say aye.
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 F stands accepted. Um, we'll move on to the special land use standards.
So, um, the previous standards were all pretty much about the site, organization, um, layout, landscaping, ingress and egress and things like that, but they don't talk about the use itself. So these standards that we're about to go through are, are, are the general special land use standards. And so these are going to be focused more on the use of the property, um, and how, how that relates to the neighboring, neighboring parcels, um, and the city generally. So the first standard says that, uh, the use shall be constructed, operated, and maintained, so it has to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the design and the character of the general vicinity. And such a use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is being proposed. You know, there may be some question, I guess, about whether or not industrial is harmonious with residential, but I think the second part of this statement in that it will not change the essential character of the area is, is the key here, because this has been an industrial site for a long time. There's been outdoor storage on this site for a long time. Um, usually in, um, in quantities and frequencies much greater than what is being proposed here. So, um, I think that this is a fairly modest change to the overall character of the site and the overall character of this area of the city. And, um, you know, therefore, we feel like that this standard would be met.
Commissioners, any thoughts? General public, any thoughts? All in favor then of accepting the special land use standard number one? Please say aye.
Aye.
And aye, same sign. It's accepted then? Number two?
Uh, use shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, fire protection, drainage structure, refuse, refuse disposal, water and sewage facilities. Uh, the storage of empty containers doesn't require most of those services, water and sewer, for example. It does have access to those things. It's well-served by, by, by transportation facilities. Um, the site is open enough that, uh, police and, uh, fire department emergency personnel can get, fit around pretty easily there. So, um, subject to their review of the site, which would occur after this approval, if it's approved, there's a sheet that goes around, right? Everyone kind of takes a look at it and signs off on it. So subject to that, uh, review being conducted by the other departments of the city, our suggestion would be that the standard is also satisfied.
And when they do that review, they all go on the site plan review with the condition of nothing hazardous being stored.
Yeah, so there's a letter that is drafted by the city that lists out, this was the approval, these are all, all of the conditions, and so they could see that. There's an opportunity for all of the departments to note any specific concerns. So if they're concerned about something being extraordinary, then we can have that discussion, make sure that they, um, you know, they, they understand what the conditions of approval are. And the police department's been, is, 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 has been quite good about noticing abnormalities in the city as it relates to zoning and wondering, say. Is this allowed? Do we sign off on this and keep me up on it? So I am confident that that would occur here too.
Commissioners, anything on the, uh, second, uh, special land use standard? All in favor of accepting it as a standard is, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Number two is accepted. And number three?
Item three, these shall, uh, shall not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. Um, because this is a fairly modest staging area and operation for empty containers, it will really not create any unusual or, uh, disproportionate strain or impact on, uh, public services or require additional investment of, of, of public services. So we feel that this standard is met.
Commissioners, any questions, concerns? Uh, then, uh, for the special land use standards, number three, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number three is accepted. And number four?
The proposed use shall not involve usage activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's properties or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. Again, you know, this, there's really not going to be any, any of that. Um, if anything, the traffic on the site is historically will be significantly less than, um, what it's been over the years, just because this is a much different proposal from the original operation, and the overall number of containers being proposed on the, on the site, um, leads us to believe that it's not going to be a particularly visible, much less noisy operation. Um, many of these, you know, smoke and stuff, odor, aren't, shouldn't come into play at all since the community will be empty. And, um, you know, it won't be any activities taking place on the side though.
Commissioners, any discussion then on the, uh, special land use standard number four? All in favor of accepting that? Please say aye.
Aye.
Number four is accepted.
So at the end of our report here on the bottom of page four, we have recommended that the planning commission approve the site plan and special land use. Uh, we have listed out six conditions. I'm proposing we add that a little bit. Um, so the first four conditions you've seen dozens of times are the same conditions that, that we put on everything. Uh, demolition or earthworks will be taken on the site until the building permit is issued, consistent with his approval. Prior to the issuance of any permits, the applicant must pay that application fees, um, maintain any required state, federal, local permits, uh, for compliance with any stipulations of the fire department or any other applicable personnel, uh, I'm sorry, of, of any other applicable emergency personnel regarding access to the site. Uh, item five, we have proposed a cap of fifteen containers on the site, and those containers shall be stored within the area specified on the site plan. Six, truck traffic shall utilize the ingress and egress located on Alden Nash. And then I want to add a couple more, uh, just based on the conversations tonight. Um, seven, the containers, uh, that there will be no stacking of containers, and that they will be empty. Um, Marty, you briefly mentioned hours of operation. Is that something that you want to include as a condition?
Well, it's kind of like what we did just for noise.
Right.
We just did prevent it.
Right.
For the, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we did limit the time, you know.
Right.
I think that's a, I know it's industrial, but if we can control it somewhat, I would like to see that. I mean, we, we started it, and I'd like to see it keep going forward with it.
I, I, I would agree. I, seems to me as though that's reasonable, and, uh, you know, if not, they can always come back and ask for variance or whatever. I mean, it, it just seems to me as though we want to continue to encourage that kind of interaction since our housing stock is so close.
Right.
To the neighborhood. Can you review that? What, what are you writing to?
When we did the, uh, the new van, our dealership, the neighbors to the back, we, we restricted the time that they can, you know, be moving in that back area along that residential area.
Yep.
Just for the noise, just like the lumber labor, the kevows and all that.
Starting, starting cutters, yeah.
Yep. We just kept.
Do you recall, I believe we did it from eight until five?
Yes.
Is that? I, I, let's, let's stay with the eight to five scenario then.
Eight, eight, eight to five, I think is a little restrictive. The other businesses start at seven in the morning there, and just the trucking business in general, uh, I mean, it just doesn't end at five o'clock.
That is, that is true. Logistically, trucking is, it's a day almost. What is, uh, Ben and Baker, what's the Ford dealership? Does that have any restrictions on? That, that's on the other side of the road.
That's true.
But, but man, I'd, I'd like to at least see a seven, seven thirty, eight o'clock, something like that.
Well, they're not going to have any lights. This time of the night, this, I mean, it's eight, you know, twenty-nine right now, and it's been dark for quite a while, and you're not proposing any lighting out there, so we need to find a happy medium.
No, I, I agree, I, I agree. And that's why I would ask the question. I anticipated it would be basically daylight hours. So in the summertime, it's light till ten o'clock at night, and I, I don't anticipate, to call it nine. Uh, I, I don't anticipate nine o'clock at night, but, but just to limit it to five, I think is a little restrictive.
Let's do seven to seven. Reasonable.
Okay. That's fair.
That was pretty much that, that situation. Well, as you know, I mean, it's even earlier than that sometimes, but, I mean, you know, seven to seven is reasonable, I think.
Right. Yeah, I agree. Just so we got a timeframe.
Yeah. Let's do seven to seven then.
Thank you. Then these, uh, last one's supposed to be a condition number nine that I would suggest is that the fencing and trees, um, or vegetation, if you want to call it that, to the north shall be maintained. Of Lowell. Yeah. And basically, I just don't want.
I didn't want to allow the national.
Yeah.
Do we need to?
Neighbors are as protected as we possibly can.
Do we? You may have mentioned it, Andy, and I may have, and I heard it. They, it has to stay in that boundary.
Yep. Yeah, um, number, condition number five, uh, the second, kind of the predicate of that, all containers shall be stored within the area so specified on the site plan. So that is included on number, condition number five. So, um, our suggestion was, so there's nine conditions now that we went over, um, and so I guess.
I'd like to close the public hearing at this portion. Uh, Commissioners, any other questions at this portion? And can I have a motion for the special land use and site plan review with the following nine conditions? I'll make a motion. And do we have support?
I'll support.
And do we have any further discussion? Sue, roll call, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Plank?
Yes.
Mr. Schraven?
Yes.
Mr. Kepwaller, Indedula, Argapset, and Joe Barker?
Yes. Thank you very much. Uh, the special land use and site plan review, um, have been, uh, have been okay for the West Main, Illinois. Thank you very much. Public, thanks for your input too. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here. New business B, public hearing, rezoning from C three, general commercial, uh, district to C one, neighborhood commercial district. Andy, you want to start us off on that? Uh, general public, we will have comments as we go through here again, and obviously, uh, please feel free, so we'll, we'll make sure to do that. I'd like to open the public hearing on the neighborhood business rezoning.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if you recall, last month, uh, we brought before you the, uh, there's a, a concern. There's about six residential parcels on, um, Main Street between Smith and Amity. Um, the address is a little hard to read once we, I can't read that. Anyways, um, it's basically the whole block that fronts Main Street on, on, on the north side of Main. Then there's two lots that front, um, to the, to the, to, to the rear there. One of them is actually a through lot, it goes all the way through. Um, there are six kind of, or six original planted lots there that are used for single-family residential purposes, um, but they are zone C three. They have been zoned C three for a long time. Um, and the concern is that the way that the non-conforming provisions of the zoning ordinance are written presently is that if, if one of these houses burns down or gets destroyed somehow, um, they can be rebuilt without complying with the ordinance. So it, so do we require some kind of commercial use to build it well as it is? And due to that, there are a number of, there are lenders, you know, banks that are not going to issue mortgages for these properties because in the event of a loss, they can't, um, recoup their investment. So at the previous meeting, we provided a memo that had three or four different options on how we deal with this. You guys, uh, selected sort of two options. So this is part A, and then there's part B that we'll be getting at next month as well. Um, so part A is that we rezone these to a district that is outlined in the zoning ordinance, but is not shown anywhere on the map, uh, which is C one neighborhood business. That is a district that is intended for very small-scale neighborhood-type uses, so, um, small, depth-scale shops or offices, services and things like that. So my suggestion is that, one, we rezone this to a neighborhood business district, and then while we do that, we also amend the neighborhood business district language to permit single-family houses. Um, and we're, and we're doing it this way because, um, one, we can't just strictly rezone these properties to residential because the master plan clearly calls them up for commercial, uh, use, which makes sense since it is on Main Street. So that's why we're keeping it commercial, and we're going with neighborhood businesses instead of C three because we can really limit, uh, the impact of allowing residential uses in a, in this primarily commercial zoning district if it's only, if it's a new district, it is app. So right now, uh, that change that we're making this neighborhood business district is only going to affect these six parcels because these.